Good afternoon and welcome to a goal-setting special meeting of the Burbank City Council on Thursday, March 12th, 2020. Vice Mayor Frutos, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Will everyone please stand?
Everybody can please face the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Assistant City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gable Eddy.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Telemontes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Springer.
Here. City Manager, do you have any comments?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you, Council, for taking the time to meet this afternoon. So, one of the reasons I wanted to do this and continue to re-up as far as Council goals on a regular basis is because it really does help staff, excuse me, it really does help staff focus and prioritize its workload. We do have a sizable workload and it does help us to focus throughout the year. So, it also helps us as we are currently preparing for the budget, so it does allow us to allocate resources accordingly based on your priorities. And while unanticipated things do come up, like what's happening today, throughout the year, having goals to focus on has really served us well. So, I would like to refer you to this document that you all have received, and this is the list of accomplishments over the last roughly two years since our last goal-setting session. And I think if you just skim through that, that's just a sampling, that's just the stuff that we've kind of thought of over the last few weeks. Having a goal session like this, you do accomplish things, and so you should, you have a lot to be proud of as far as this three-page list with stuff in the works and to come. So, like I said, having a goal-setting session like this and thinking about the future is part of good governance and strong leadership. And I have a good quote here for you. It's "The key responsibility of leadership is to think about the future. No one else can do it for you." And I like this quote because we are all in, we're all in these seats just for so long. So, today, we want you to really think about the future of this great city. This is Burbank, and really, what are the issues and what are the goals that we should be focusing on for this upcoming year? So, I think this is your responsibility as city leaders to really help us improve the community, steer us in the right direction, and like I said, Burbank is a great place, and I think we could even make it better. So, I hope that we have some fun doing this, and I think it's, it's not just we're going through the motions here, this is an important aspect of our, our normal workload. Just as important is how we work together. So, you have, you've done a great job as far as modeling an effective and civil board over the last several years, and I, staff I know appreciates that. So, for the second part of the session here, we're going to talk about norms and expectations. And I think that's part of the reasons why you work well as a team and are effective with us, effective with your peers and the public. So, the second half of this exercise is to reaffirm those norms and expectations, and we have our two, our two documents that we have, our Expectations of Staff, as well as our How We Work Together documents. So, without further ado, I do have Chief Garcia and Ms. Goldman, who are going to be your facilitators today, and we're excited about that, and they're going to lead you through the afternoon, and they promised me this is going to be fun, interactive, and that you guys will have plenty of candy. So, with that, I will turn it over back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment on agenda items only. Please present a completed yellow public comment card to the city clerk if you wish to speak. Any person speaking during public comment may address the council now on any item on the agenda, and we have, our first speaker is Mike Nolan.
Mike Nolan, the most important thing actually has already been said by our new city manager. We're in Burbank, and you have the privilege of maintaining Burbank the way Burbank people expected to be maintained. I commented recently about when we had the wind and the city employees were out there and did such a great job. That's what we need. Now, and you're looking ahead in this year, and I'm glad the chief is here, Chief Garcia, our police, fire, and water and power, the linemen, the IBW members, the policemen and the firemen and women, we need full strength. We don't have full strength now. We're short. Across the board, we're short. Now, you may find these words funny, but I'm going to use them anyway. There's a difference between a poacher and a poachy. We have had people poaching our trained personnel for their own benefit in Southern California. We don't have a residency requirement anymore, and do the hours that some of these people work, it doesn't make a difference to them where they live. They don't care about Burbank per se, the way we do, it's just a job to them. And so, we've had a drain. It's time to plug up the drain, and you all can do it. You need to make sure that the word gets out to the city manager and to the management team, that you expect in, one of your goals in this next year is to not only stop the loss, but to add some gains. Now, we're back to the poacher and the poachy thing again. I really think it's important, and I would hope that you would join me in letting these people know, that's a priority for you, to maintain the Burbank that we all love and cherish. Thank you for your attention very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Ms. Jimenez, do we have any more cards? Thank you. That concludes public comments. City Council, we will now proceed to discuss and prioritize city council goals and review, and review council documents. At this time, I would like to invite Fire Chief Eric Garcia to commence the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm excited about this opportunity. We're going to have some fun this afternoon. To kind of set the stage for everything, I want to put a little bit, set some guidelines and kind of for the framework of what we're going to be working toward this afternoon. So, going to list a few items here that we're going to work toward following. Initial, initial one here is we want to look at this discussion as really as a broad set of goals. We're looking at work we can accomplish this calendar year that will help us set up Burbank for long-term success. And after the presentation between Ms. Goldman and myself, we'll provide some context for the discussion, and we will work through a series of activities that will help us think about what makes Burbank great and what we can do to make Burbank greater. This will, excuse me, during all the activities, we'll be asking you to do some dreaming, and then we'll refocus specifically on the role for council and how we can go about that process. This will be a little more free-form than our normal council meeting, and you do not need to share all of your thoughts at one time, and the thing that we're looking for is to allow for everybody to contribute through this process as we go. We may be at times, I need to redirect the discussion so that we can move forward, so we can stay within our time constraints. And of course, if you have anything additionally you'd like to bring up, you can do that through, through council meetings or with the city manager. At the end, we aim to have a set of goals that will direct council and staff to work for the next year, and also while helping us to contribute to be successful in the working relationships that we have between council and staff. This includes a review of the documents of city council, how we will work together, and the city council's expectations of staff, and this will really bear down to the how and the what of what we will work together to ensure that we may have a successful year. Okay, going to lead right into the next section of this here, so a little bit of the ground rules, so really now, why we're here, and that is really the council, the goal of setting council goals. So, I'm confident at the end of the program here that we're going to have a, council will have established a solid set of goals that we can work toward. And as any set of group, team organizational goals, there's one key factor that really will drastically impact how those goals and the achievement of those goals will take place, and that's leadership. Strong leadership inspires belief, strong leadership garners buy-in, and strong leadership provides a sense of purpose. And I'm extremely passionate about leadership, and I'm really honored to be able to talk with council for a little bit, for a brief section here on some of the positive impacts of leadership. So, really, for the objections of, excuse me, objectives of our overall discussion, we're going to hit kind of four major topics, and one is to define the role of leadership, talk about a couple of major, major leadership tenants that are in, successful and strong leaders, and we'll discuss four supporting leadership behaviors as well. Lastly, we intend to discuss really the positive impacts that council's leadership has had on the effect of our city as well. So, we'll begin with really the role of leadership, and we'll start with a definition. And Webster would define leadership as the art of motivating a group toward working to a common goal, and I feel strongly that we actually take that one step further, and that really is that leadership is putting oneself out there and really accepting the responsibility, the integrity and the overall ownership of that process of achieving those goals. There are two major tenets that leadership, strong leaders possess, one of them being the transformational leadership model, and another being the servant leadership model. Talked to the first one here in the transformational leadership model, and transformational leaders have a strong, strong ability to possess and put together a shared vision and a shared mission. Transformational leaders place organizational interests above self-interests, and really they have innate ability to create a safe environment, environment where those that are involved in the process from a team, from a group or organization, have the ability to earn and build trust, and when we establish that environment where we can earn and build that safe trust, it really leads to positive influence. Servant leadership model, we'll talk to you next. This is one of my favorite particularly. The servant leaders, the two, two key cornerstones for servant leadership really are humility and gratitude. The servant leader really maintains a strong ability to understand that the service is bigger than, than the leader themselves, and the servant leader takes great pride and satisfaction in helping others. Servant leadership, the servant leader themselves really has a selfless desire to want to care. And there's a really, one of my favorite servant leadership quotes comes from one of our former presidents and Teddy Roosevelt, and Teddy Roosevelt states that they do not care how much, how much you know until they know how much you care. And so, as we, as we discuss, the, the meaning of actually, of care, really equates to action, and action typically escapes, as we all know, actions speak louder than words, and really what that equates to is behaviors. And there's four key leadership behaviors that I feel are real indicative of solid leaders. The first one is being a pro. Be a professional, a consummate professional in anything that we do. Next is to own it. Take ownership in anything that we put our name to as leaders. Thirdly is to walk the talk. Leaders have got to model what it's supposed to look like, and there's one thing in my opinion that can, that derails any positive groundswell, any leadership, any forward motion quicker than a leader who has a do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do type mentation. That, that's one of those things for me that I really try to model with, within my leadership prowess as well. Next is caring. This is one of those items that we profess quite a bit, obviously, through the service bases that we all have, and that caring, not only for the people that we serve, but also for each one of our teammates, that, those people that are completely involved in this process, and by, by caring, that's that, that solid cohesion that we pull together that helps others to believe and, and inspire them to believe in the, in the actual mission itself. So, when leaders are able to model these behaviors, again, what it, what that really equates to is that positive influence, and when we're able to, you know, establish that safe environment, that positive influence that comes together from that, it really inspires others to believe in what that shared mission and vision is. Next piece I'd like to talk to on here with council would be just really the positive impacts that council's had, your leadership and what the actions you guys have put in place for us as an agency, as a city, and how we're going to begin to move forward with that. So, council has collectively accepted the responsibility to reshape our city. Council has embraced wholeheartedly the fundamentals of that transformational and servant leadership model. They've done so by creating that, that shared vision for our future. They've also done so by realizing that it's bigger than council themselves. They're working hard toward paying, paying forward a sustainable future for our community. Council's also done an outstanding job demonstrating, demonstrating the importance of being a unified team, and you guys have done that through your leadership conviction, and, and this is a real important one, of embracing the mindset of understanding that we've got to, got to break out of the way we've always done things, really looking at how we can creatively and innovatively put our thoughts together to stretch ourselves, move ourselves out of that kind of proverbial box, and really dream about what that future can be by having and changing, changing that mindset. Council also has realized that the establishment of their council, council initiatives, initiatives is going to be that, that prioritizing document that's going to help us, move us in that, in that, in that fashion, and council has always, also recognized that this is going to be a process. It's not going to happen overnight, but what that process will equate to will be to us enhancing the city as a whole. So, it's with this in mind that we get to our, back, back to kind of our program today, and part of that process will be to identify what's gone well, what, what we've done really well, and then also to establish the goals to keep us striving for that constant improvement, and really how that really aligns with council's vision for the progress of our city. So, I'd like to close with one small piece, and this one's really near and dear to my heart as well, and that's legacy. Legacy is realizing that our service is bigger than us individually, and the positions, the ranks, the seats that we, we currently are sitting in aren't necessarily ours proprietarily. They're of those that have come before us to help to start and pave, pave the way for us, and then it is our responsibility as our present-day leaders to grab a hold of that and build that formidable foundation that we can, again, support the next wave of leaders that are going to be coming behind us. So, the realization is that our time in service will ultimately come to an end, and that when that does come, we will ultimately be defined by the legacy that we leave for the next generation to come behind us. Thank you guys very much. I'm going to pass this on to Ms. Goldman now at this time.
Thank you.
All right. I know this is a little wobbly, so I'm nervous about moving it, but it is a little bit above my head. Is that good? Okay. All right. We have to have a few technical difficulties, right? So, thank you. Good afternoon. Nice to see all of you. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director. I'm very excited, as Chief Garcia is, to be co-facilitating this event for you today. And what we wanted to start off with was this little bit of context, so Chief Garcia has talked to you about, a bit about leadership, and then I'm going to talk, just remind us all of a few of the events that we have all lived through together and worked through in the past few years. So, thinking about our state of the city last fall, we talked about Burbank being a world-class city, and one of the things about being a world-class E, we have many wonderful things going on that help that happen here, kind of whether or not we focus on it, but really you have to, you don't get to be a world-class city without making decisions. And some of those decisions can be challenging, as you all well know, and there is a value into taking this step back like we're doing today and setting goals to help guide those decisions and make sure that they're really leading someplace, that you really are getting to this legacy that you wish to be leaving for the city. So, the last time we did this activity was in the summer of 2017, and we were in very uncertain times financially as a city then. We had some room to improve with civility among the council and between council and staff, and we were really making the first attempt that time around in a while to take the step back and look at broader and really realistic goals instead of focusing in too much on a laundry list of things that weren't necessarily prioritized. What we want to do is set goals and accomplish those goals because that feels good, right? And part of that is setting realistic goals. So, some of the changes that we've experienced since August 2017, all of which will be very familiar to you, include the successful passage of Measures T and P that got our city back on a good financial track. We've made some excellent payments to CalPERS to reduce our unfunded liability. We set up the Infrastructure Oversight Board and have really started down a path of being organized with infrastructure spending, identifying the projects that are necessary, and making plans. And you guys have taken some other measures to ensure fiscal stability, such as policies around market pay and continuing to negotiate with our city unions. Of course, a lot of activity has been going on in the past couple of years around housing and state laws that affect us, and you guys have been very effective in setting housing goals and moving projects forward. Homelessness is another one that's really been evolving, but I have to say, you know, having been with the city for four years now, that when I came, we really didn't even have the groups of people together having the conversation about it, and now we have a plan and we're implementing our plan. So, even though we still have people in our community who are experiencing homelessness, we are confronting it and we're dealing with it, and we are, we are moving forward. You also have taken some big steps on the sustainability front, such as the single-use plastic ban, and around safety, like safe routes to schools and implementation of body-worn cameras for the police department, as well as governance, that was one of your goals last time. We updated the city council agenda and improved participation and civility at meetings. And of course, there has been a change in the city council membership itself and in our city manager, so things do change all the time, and Burbank is a city, is itself changing and will continue to change. Our population, as you are all aware, has been pretty stagnant for a long time, but is likely to be growing more in the future as new housing comes along the line. And one thing about the population, important to know, is that it is aging, and so that does affect the kind of demand on services and where we want to focus our energy. The median home price continues to go up really dramatically here all the time. That has good sides and bad sides when that is happening. We have some more diverse language groups in the community with some of the newer families that are moving in. Also, all based on census data, and today is the first day that you can submit the census, so I guess I feel like I have to do a plug for that. But Burbank also continues to be significantly better educated and higher earning than other parts of Los Angeles County, thanks to the continuing strength of the media industry. Our job growth remains really strong, but of course, we are struggling with that housing, jobs imbalance, that is a focus of a lot of your energy. So, it seems like right now there's a lot of excitement about the future of Burbank. It's mixed in with a little bit of fear of losing what makes Burbank special, and that's something we all have to navigate in the positions we're in, and you guys do too, and that is part of one of the activities we'll do today is, is really thinking about what are those things that makes Burbank special, and keeping that in the backs of our minds so that we can make sure that the goals we're setting and the decisions going forward are going to support, keeping what is underlying, that what's really matters about what makes Burbank special. It may not be a specific institution or group or something like that, but it's more about values, what matters, and what makes this community strong. So, you, the decisions you make as the city council and your focus on your goals are what's setting the stage for Burbank to head into the future in a way that will bring more community, more universal prosperity, more engagement, and more opportunity to our residents, workers, and the visitors of our city. And all of this work doesn't just happen. We're able to make more progress when we adhere to our committed expectations. You've reviewed those documents heading into the meeting, and we're going to discuss them at the end, but as we work through our activities today, I just wanted to highlight a few things from the, how we work together and Expectations of Staff documents, just again, keep in the back of your mind as we go. So, overall goal, remember, we're all here, working for the good of the community. That's why we're all here in this room today. We want to keep our focus. We want to demonstrate respect and not make things personal. You want to remember, you can disagree on an issue with each other, it doesn't mean you're divided as a group. You guys have great teamwork, and that involves being respectful in your discussions and disagreements, but it doesn't mean you have to agree on everything. We want to have information, we want to be transparent as a city, and make sure that you guys all know what each other has been hearing. You want to share your thoughts openly when you're debating issues as a council, so a rich discussion can occur. You want to share what meetings you've had, or committee attendance and things like that for information. And as you work with staff, on the staff side, we're very committed to professionalism, clear communication, and objective analysis, to providing you with alternatives where appropriate, and, but also make clear what our professional recommendation is, to keep you well-informed and be available to you for questions. And in exchange, we ask, please don't personally attack us as staff, because we, we're making a recommendation, you know, just like you have to make tough decisions, we have to make tough decisions. It's not about any of the individuals in the room. Again, we can disagree, we can keep it civil while we disagree. You may ultimately vote to recommend an action different than a staff recommendation, and we understand that, and we will respect your ultimate decision and carry out the work. Of course, we do ask that individual council members are not providing work direction directly to staff, but the directions coming from the group as a whole. And finally, making, when making requests, we hope you will understand that we are taking this time today to set these goals and prioritize and focus our work, and so as requests come up that don't fit into the goals, we will get to it when we can. As Mr. Hess said, we would like to do everything, but we don't have all the resources to do everything, and so we will prioritize what has come out of this goal-setting session today. So, again, we will be taking a look at those documents at the end of today, and if you have any suggestions for updating them, you can make those at this time. So, are you ready to get to work? All right. So, here's what we want to keep in mind today. There is a lot of important work to do in Burbank. We're lucky to work in a community that's engaged and will speak up about issues and opportunities to improve the city. These ideas all have value. The priorities that are brought up in the news, public comment on social media and in local conversation all have merit. If we had unlimited time and unlimited staff, we could get to it all. But right now, in specifically for this activity today, we are just looking at one year. There is going to be a council election later this fall, and so this council is setting goals for yourselves for the next 12 months or so, as opposed to for a longer stretch of time. We often do this activity for two years at a time, but this year it's one year. So, that's an important thing to keep in mind. We can't do everything ever, but especially what, we can't do everything in one year. So, what really are the priorities? That one year is a short time in the world of government, right? So, by working together today to identify areas of focus in that we can move forward in this one-year timeframe, both you, the council, and us, the staff, have the best chance of success in fulfilling our role as public servants. And having a bold vision is a wonderful thing. Anyone who knows me knows I love bold visions, but for the purposes of a single year, if we get too big or too broad, we're not going to be effective. At the same time, if we are too specific, then, and then things change, as things always change, whether it's state legislation or external factors, the economy, then, so then we may not be able to carry those out. So, what we're looking for is goals that we can focus on, we can, we can not change up every few months, which results in confusion and lost work, and just taking the time to set things that are appropriate and achievable in this year. The last time that we did council goal-setting in August 2017, as you, you have the sheets explaining the five priority areas that were selected then, which were budget, housing, economic development, governance, and traffic and parking. So, earlier we highlighted a few accomplishments that fell within those areas, and you have them on the sheets, but what I wanted to do first was to give you each a chance to speak briefly about what one accomplishment, since the last time we did council goal-setting, so over the last couple of years, what one accomplishment do you feel like? so over the last couple of years, what one accomplishment do you feel like was the biggest council accomplishment? And this is the first of several times that you're all going to be called on today, so I want to explain to you what order we're going to do the selections in. This first round, we will start with the mayor, the vice mayor, council member Talamantes, council member Gabe Letty, council member Murphy. Second round, we'll start with Vice Mayor Frutos and go through, and so different people have a chance to be the first one to speak up. Does that sound okay? So we're not doing the picking the chocolate this time, but I believe you have chocolate on your table, so help yourself whenever you need it hit. All right, so, so Mayor Springer, would you like to share first? What do you think was council's biggest accomplishment over the last couple of years?
The budget and fiscal stability. Our budget and fiscal stability with our sales tax measure and all of the work that we did for that over several, several years.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Our successor MOU compensation policy. That was to me a major, major hurdle that the council tackled on and a major accomplishment.
Great. Council member Talamantes.
Pension liability, moving forward.
Certainly a big one. Council member Gabe Letty.
Our residents vote to support a sales tax and also to support the continuing transfer from water and power so that we reached a point of stability going forward for several years.
Great. Council member Murphy.
I'm going to join Councilman Talamantes. The pension liability, I think, was huge. It's just grown and grown and grown, and people are aware of it, and we haven't dealt with it, and this council dealt with it, and I feel for the first time, yeah.
Mic.
Mic.
Hold that button, okay, yeah, that.
I tried all the other ones. There's this one, that one, so thanks. I think I'm okay. But, you know, I think for the first time, I can see that Burbank is, is really in a stable place, and I feel like we're sustainable. I mean, oh, sorry. Forgot to start up my phone. The, you know, I worked for the county for a million years, and we went, we went 10, 15 years without getting raises, and it seems like the, the people that we work with and work for us expect a raise, you know, almost every year, and, and, you know, it just, if you're not bringing it in, you can't pay it out. So I think that the pension thing was huge.
Great. So, we all have, are very busy all the time. We have a lot of work to do. Sometimes you can forget to recognize your accomplishments, so hopefully it feels good to spend a few, a minute here just thinking about you guys, you set goals and you achieved your goals. You did great work, and that was council and staff working together to serve the needs of our community. So when we focus, we can get great stuff done. And yes, there are external factors that affect the work. What the goal of housing meant to you in summer 2017 is probably not exactly what that would mean to you today. Today, I think many, many of us have spent every other minute except being here on coronavirus, things like that happen, and that wasn't even on our minds a few weeks ago. But one of the reasons that every few years we take this step back to look at the big picture of where we're at as a city and where we want to go is because we can get caught up in all that day-to-day stuff. So, we have heard some input from a member of the public today, and we presented you a little bit of context about leadership demographics and trends that are worth keeping in mind. I know, as a leader, it can feel like a lot of weight, your responsibility to choose a limited number of options, areas to focus on when there is so much need and there are so many opportunities, but we are going to work through this process together and, and try to take that weight off and feel excited about the future of Burbank through a couple of quick exercises. So I'm going to hand it back to Chief Garcia for the first exercise.
All righty. Our, our first exercise today, and it's going to be our personal values activity. And so as Ms. Goldman was stating, as you, as we all know, the dynamics of public office are certainly extraordinary, and there are different needs and opportunities and demands that demand your attention as you tend to city business. And amid all the clamoring, it's helpful to keep in mind why you decided to run for elected office and to keep in mind what inspires and motivates you to, to serve, why, why you serve, and what personal values you try to keep in mind when considering the actions that you take on behalf of our city. So we've asked you to give you, give this a little bit of thought in advance, and we come up with a few words or phrases or sentences that will be representative of those personal values that you guys each hold. So it's important to note here before we get started that these are not a collective council set of values, but rather they're individual values that each of you have put together, and in this context, it's intended to serve for just that, those personal values that really emphasize why you serve. Okay, so again, we had these in advance, and you may have written, written down a handful of these values, but what we'd like to do at this time is to see if there's anything from our discussion that we've had this far that would be any reason for you to kind of adjust those or maybe add to the list that you do have. And so for the sake of our activity here, we'd like to see that you just compress that down to three to five of your top, top, top personal values. And so at this time, I'll give you just a few minutes to reflect on those and see if there's any additions or changes that you'd like to, like to make, and then we'll, we'll Okay, we're just about ready. All right, we're going to do, as Ms. Goldman stated, we're going to continue with our circulation. So council member Talamantes will have you. If you could list yours. Ms. Ailes will go ahead and post those on our, on our flip chart over there on the right. My correction, excuse me. Vice Mayor Frutos, excuse me, thank you.
Rats, I thought I escaped. My examples to share is integrity, dedication, ethics, and last is fairness.
Now we're back. Council member Talamantes.
Thank you, chief. The five that I came up with is listen, communicate, cooperate, collaborate, respect, and support.
Okay, I had grit, grace, innovation, focus, and teamwork, and then a bunch of real wordy stuff. Those are my five.
Councilwoman Murphy.
Yeah, I didn't want to ruin her crayon or whatever.
All right, that's a, that's an outstanding list, and for the, for the purposes of our program here, Ms. Ailes will go, excuse me, I apologize. Madam Mayor.
I get with the program.
Yep.
I wrote a, I wrote a sentence, and I'll, when I finish, I'll just give you the five, the top five. Person of integrity and persistence and courage who is committed to equity and fairness through innovative collaborative teamwork. So I'd say integrity, persistence, courage, innovative, and teamwork.
Think integrity as well, Ms. Ailes. Gotcha, okay. That's an outstanding list, and again, as, as we get going here, Ms. Ailes is going to go ahead and post those on the right side of, of the chambers here, so that, correction, your left of the chambers here, so we can have those for reference as we continue throughout, throughout the process of the program here. Go ahead and turn it back over to Ms. Goldman here now for our next activity.
All right, so these first two activities are getting us in a good frame of mind for doing this work, and so they're both going to result in some sheets that we're, we're not going to work with further later on, but we're just going to have them hung over here so that, you know, if we're getting into the mix a little bit and you need to glance over there and remind yourself while you're here, you have this really wonderful list of values to keep in mind, and if we're all, those are values we're all adhering to, then this is, then we know we'll do great things and we'll be doing them, we'll be doing right by the community. So, the next activity is a thought exercise, and the purpose of this is to help you expand your thoughts beyond whatever news you woke up to, which I wrote that sentence quite a while ago, and now, of course, we all did wake up to very scary news. But we want to expand our thoughts beyond the news of the day and beyond any topics that have really been weighing on you. We are all prone to focus on whatever came to our attention most recently, but in trying to set goals for the next year, we want to expand our minds beyond that. So we're going to start really big and get ourselves in a positive frame of mind. Just a couple of days ago, we were all together at the Boards and Commissions Dinner. It was a great energetic night that really, I think, reminded everyone of why we do this work, so we want to be in that kind of mindset. So are you ready to do a little dreaming? So the, the activity here, and you have a worksheet to work from, is to imagine that you are at an event making a pitch for residents or businesses to move to Burbank. I'll have to find you. Sheet of paper.
You mean just a blank, blank sheet, you mean?
That's what it looks like. It's got some spaces for you to write on. Okay, we'll make sure you get it while I'm coming. All right, so you are at an event making a pitch for residents or businesses to move to Burbank. Please imagine the absolute most ideal Burbank, which will overlap with the actual Burbank, but of course, it won't be precisely the same. So first, we want you to think about, there's two questions here, and you can see them on the screen if you don't have your paper yet. First of all, what do you tell that person or that group that you're speaking to? And I put, you know, you can, you can think about people who might move here as residents, you can think about businesses, you can think about whatever group feels comfortable to you. What would you describe as the best attributes of this community? And then, as a second question, think for a little bit about why those are the things you're highlighting. So this is getting, we talked about your values as public servants, this is getting to kind of the values of the community. So for example, one of the best attributes of Burbank might be that, that it has this small-town feel. And why that matters, you know, small-town feel generally used as a compliment around here in actual small towns. It's not necessarily a wonderful thing. So we have to think about what you really mean when you're saying it has a small-town feel. Why does that matter? And it might be something like that you can, people still know their neighbors and neighbors help each other out. So that's, that's the more tangible manifestation of, of these words and phrases that we use. So what's the attribute? And then why did you pick that? Why does it matter? It matters because people are strong and connected. It matters because kids are safe, that type of thing. So, we're going to give you a few minutes just to jot down some answers to both of All right, I think we're pretty close to done here, so thank you for taking the time to think that through. So what we're going to ask you to do is just each in turn to read out the attributes that you described about Burbank, and Ms. Alice will write some, some of the words down. She's not going to transcribe it exactly, so, so feel free to describe it however you want, and then she'll get the key points about what we consider the key attributes of the community and what, this is really what we're aspiring for on behalf of the community we're serving. So, here we are this time. It is council member Talamantes's turn to go first.
I get to go first, thanks. So for the first one, I said it's, it's a full-service city with excellent city services and schools, provides programs and services to all ages. You want me to go with number two?
Sure.
The city is an extension of your quality of life expectations.
Thank you. Council member Gabe Letty.
Well, just captured it in a much shorter and more efficient way than, than mine is, but it's the same theme. Our staff's responsiveness to residents' concerns and issues are in a superior class of their own, whether it's the police lieutenant following up with a resident regarding the thoroughness of an officer's response to their call, or the master recycling class held by our recycling geniuses. There is a strong sense that community matters, and the social contract is intact. Why do these attributes matter? They matter because our city is people-oriented in a digital world of numbers and selection buttons.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Murphy.
I did mine more, more general, and it seems to me it really makes a difference whether you're pitching to someone to live I did mine more general, and it seems to me it really makes a difference whether you're pitching to someone to live here or you're pitching someone to open a business, because the things that I would pick are substantially different. So, Murphy.
Mike.
You're right.
Sorry.
Next time they're going to come out with.
That's okay. I can take them, I think. Yes, caring, quality people, loyal people, distinct neighborhoods that are safe, small-town mentality, near Los Angeles but not overwhelmed by it. Location, location, location. One-half hour to the beach, one-half hour to the mountains. California lifestyle, best weather you can imagine. And it's a place where you can participate, and you actually want to participate, and that's rare. That's it.
That's great. Thank you.
It's not great.
All right. Mayor Springer.
I have sense of community. It's manageable size. There's an accessible city council and staff. It's safe. We have good police and fire. Good schools, great programs for just about everybody, seniors, our children, great parks and rec department. I like that we have our own utility, and our rates are some of the lowest around. Our boards and commissions, and I'm proud that we have a program like the PASH program so that we can include people who don't have the financial means to participate. We enable them to. And these are important because we are safe, we can relax, and we don't have to be on alert all the time. And the diversity inclusivity of our community may get more interesting and a fun place to be.
All right, thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Fruto.
People connection. Burbank is a city where people really get connected. No matter where you live, you know, where I live, the hillside, the ranchel, people are very well-connected in our city. I love that everything is close by. You don't have to leave the city. You can do your banking, your meds, your shopping, your visiting friends and neighbors, all in one city. But most important, the city is very responsive to the needs of its people. And question number two, this is a place where you can grow old. This is a place where, without really, you know, getting too much into the weeds, but my doctor happens to be the same doctor of Jess. My doctor is the same doctor to some of the members of the Walt Disney family. And as I've gotten to meet more people, and we talk about medical issues, come to find out, it's the same doctor who has been in the same practice for years. That, to me, is part of that people connection. And one of the exciting benefits about being here in Burbank is that in my 28 years, I've had the privilege of bumping into celebrities, whether it's Jay Leno at Handy Mart on a Saturday grabbing a sandwich, or it's literally being the guy that does the music background for CSI in his garage and watching him. There's a lot of great people with different backgrounds that contribute to the overall, how would I say, uniqueness of being in a small city like Burbank.
All right, thank you. So like, isn't that nice to take a little time and think about what does make Burbank so great? And that's good motivation for us to keep doing the work and set the goals today, and then follow through with them so that we make sure these things are retained in our community. We make sure that people coming in get to experience, people who are newer here get to experience what people who've lived here a long time have grown to love, and that we're balancing what, all the needs of various people in our community. So this, too, we're just going to post here, and it's just going to be there. If you needed a little motivation, you can glance over it and say, yes, this is Burbank. This is why I'm here. So now we are ready to start setting goals, the key exciting part of today. So we're going to refocus now on what our priorities should be for the next year.
No more fun? No more fun? Oh, sorry.
Given where we've been and where we want to go, what areas would you select as priorities for this time period? And again, we're not at this point getting too much into specific activities, so identifying the actionable objectives and tasks to help achieve these goals is something that staff will work through after this session and bring back to you through regular council agendas. Today, we're thinking pretty broadly about priority areas. So there's another worksheet coming to you, which I, looks like it's being passed down. And on this worksheet, we are going to ask you to list up to 10 areas that you think should be the priority for your work as council in the next year. What we want you to do is write enough detail so that someone else could understand what you're getting at, but it doesn't need to be a whole entire plan for how to achieve it. For example, if you just write the word housing, it could be interpreted in many, many different ways. But a little, just add a couple words to it, more affordable housing, that's a pretty clear goal. And, but it doesn't get into all the specifics of how to accomplish it. If your goal was approve a development in X address with this percent of this type of units in it, then that's getting very specific. So I know everyone's mind works differently. Some of us really love the specifics, and some of us really love the broad stuff. So on this piece of paper, you can write down absolutely as much detail as you want. When we get to the reporting, then I am going to be taking these goals and sort of clustering them by themes, and I will not write down every word that you have said to me, but we will capture everything. So feel free to write as much as you want on there. If you've come in with a ton of ideas, you can get them all down. But make sure that you can express each of those up to 10 goals with, in a brief phrase, so that we can, we can look at the themes. Does that make sense? All right, so now I'm going to give you some time to write out your goals.
All right, so thank you for taking the time to do that. So now what we're going to do is, once again, in turn, I'm going to ask you to read your goals. And while you're doing that, I'm going to be writing things on some posted notes over here and magically arranging them into themes. And so don't worry if my back is to you. I can still hear what you're saying, and I will let you know if I have, if I need any clarification. For the sake of keeping the meeting moving, again, you don't need to go into huge amount of detail about the goal, making the passionate case for it when it comes up at council. To actually take action on something, we can, we can get to that point. But just give us a few words that summarizes what that goal is. So for this one, Councilmember Gabletti gets to begin.
Well, these start out pretty wordy, but let me see if I can, you know, I just can't help myself. So I would like us to, number one, innovate a funding source or sources to financially sustain BHC in their mission to develop affordable housing. So, develop way to financially sustain BHC for new housing opportunities. Then, the second one is, short, bring the Golden State specific plan to council for discussion and direction. The third one is, identify a homeless shelter, possibly in partnership with Glendale. The fourth is, maintain our level of community services. Fifth is, begin discussion on how to transform city services to serve an aging population. Six is, more carbon-free initiatives. Seven is, preliminary ideas for the central library in the civic center area. Eight is, transform use of digital media to increase public participation. Nine, reconsider use of TO-
I'm going to hold you one sec. Can you repeat the last one, please?
Oh, eight?
Yes.
Transform use of digital media to increase public participation. Uh, transform use of digital media to increase public participation, including ways to comment at council.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Nine is, reconsider use of TOT, that's Transit Occupancy Tax, and consider possible increase. And ten is, survive the Burbank Boulevard Bridge construction.
All right. Okay, you've given me great challenges on my grouping already, so I appreciate that. All right, thinking about where to, well, not sure, I'm gonna put it down here for now. All right. Very good, Councilmember Murphy, you are up.
Yeah.
Mike Jim, Mike Jim. Thinking about skipping it again. Environmental danger, climate change, we have to do something before it's too late. That's number one. Number two, equality for women. Why has it taken so long to pass the ERA? What about C-Dow? Tough to do when we try to stay in our own lane. Traffic and speeding, sounds kinda trite, but I probably get three calls a week about speeding, and I think if I leave Burbank, it's gonna be because of traffic. Some method to teach or educate folks to just slow down and enjoy the ride. Participation. Make sure people feel good about coming to council, feel that they're heard, and communicate with us in a way that's effective. I haven't ever been the mayor, and I don't have a problem with that, but sometimes three minutes isn't enough, but I don't know how to balance it out so that it's always fair. Like, recently, we had the woman, came up from the YMCA about childcare, and after she finished speaking, I didn't really know what she wanted. She didn't get to finish, and all the people with her got up and left the room, and I'm thinking, that wasn't good, you know? But, it's, it's a tough thing to do, to figure out what's gonna work. Balanced development and plan it. There's a huge raging argument in this town about, we're overbuilt, we're building too much, traffic, blah, 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 and at the same time, the state says we're responsible to do a lot more. 777 Front Street, perfect example. I think we did a fabulous job, I was happy to vote for it, and 8,000 people thought we were stupid. That hurts. Improve voter turnout. It's crazy to me that we have 104,000 people in this city, and 10,000 people decides what the rest of us do. What is wrong with us? I mean, what, so... This one's also crazy, and not necessarily in our lane. Fund our schools. Make sure that they're the best anywhere, and I think the only way to do that is to convince the state and the feds that they have a role, and modify that stupid lottery that they sold us all into voting for. Yeah, you've heard this one before. Local control. We know what works for us. Protect our city, not necessarily just neighborhoods, but remind the state legislature, most of them were city council people before they got there, and to pay attention to what's important. Carrying rent fairness, affordable housing with, with balance. Homeless housing programs. A chance to deal with the real problem. I think a lot of politicians, not, not us, feel that you just need to provide a house or a place, and there's so much mental illness and substance abuse. I mean, you talk to the people that house these folks, and sometimes they're kicked out of their new house within a week because they won't follow the rules, which is a tragedy. I think we're doing a really good job here, but the people may not think so, if you pay attention to whatever that next door neighbor thing is. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, great. All right, Mary Springer.
Maintain local control with regular interaction with our state assembly member and senator. Stay on top of legislation, monitor situations of legislation, and follow up and intervene and advocate when necessary.
That's all part of one thing, yes?
Yes. Housing. And I just wanna give some examples, like, experiment, maybe have a modular construction project with, well-located without parking, because that saves about 25% of costs. And, and maybe experiment with 30, 45, and 80% AMI in one development, so that, that might enhance feasibility.
AMI for the lane?
Area median income?
Thank you, sorry.
Sure, no, 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 that was a good question. And, and so I have more, but we'll do those later, and as housing is our goal moving forward. Um, homelessness and I, and homeless prevention, so that we can intervene when, and help our residents before they're on the street, our vulnerable residents with subsidies and other programs. And I agree with Councilmember Murphy that it seems to be, there's a real mental health issue that needs to be addressed. Transportation is number four. For example, first mile, last mile, all of then Magnolia Bridge for better access to MetroLink and crosstown access. Maximize metro's contribution in the Bus Rapid Transit Project. Strive for GHG reduction. And, five is sustainability coordination. GHG reduction, eliminate silos between the different departments so that together we strive for GHG reduction, stormwater capture, aggressive use of renewable energy for buildings and vehicle fleet. And those are just some examples. Universal design, so that our city is accessible for everybody.
That's, sorry, is that part of the sustainability?
No, that's number six.
Or that's a separate, that's a separate one on its own, okay.
I know our specific plans are being updated, but I have specific plans on Civic Plaza. Let's see where we are on those and move forward, decide what we're going to do on Civic Plaza. Maintain, eight is maintain sound fiscal policy and responsibility.
I'm gonna ask you to hold for one second.
Sure.
I'm a little behind. Okay, so you said the specific plans in the Civic Center?
Yes.
And then, go ahead to the next one.
And eight is maintain sound fiscal policy and responsibility. Nine, maintain collaborative and supportive relationship with BUSD, Burbank Unified School District. And, possibly encourage developers to market their proposed project in a proactive way that goes beyond community outreach. That's number 10.
Okay, can you explain that a little bit more?
I, I'm sure we've all heard it, that it, it would've been helpful if the developer on the Front Street project, 777 Front Street, they did a lot of community outreach. I know they came to Sustainable Burbank Commission, Advisory Council on Disabilities, but maybe if it were marketed in a proactive way to the community at large, and I'm not sure how to, exactly that would be done, but it might make it go easier. Because I agree with Councilmember Murphy, I feel like it was, I mean, it was a 5-0, well-fought-out, well-done project, and it was kinda hijacked.
Okay. Was that the end of your list?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, all right. Vice Mayor Fritos.
All right. Better public bus transportation. No more empty buses, I'd like to see a trolley. I believe that the same, same formula, same policies that've been around for 20 years ain't working, because the buses are still empty, and we need to be more creative, so I'm really pushing for a trolley. Goal number two. I feel that we still need more police officers to match our daytime growth of 300,000 people that come here, and I know that we haven't really looked at, literally, the deployment of our numbers of police personnel versus, one, our planned growth for the future, adding on the 12,000 units plus other projects along the way. I think that should be a discussion and a issue moving forward. I think it's time for a third ambulance, just because of watching the number of calls and our aging population, I think our resources, at least for the paramedic side, I think they could use another rescue ambulance. Four, I'd like to see a study, a citywide study on its workforce to make sure that we have the required number of employees in the right positions, just because the way things are changing, making sure that every single position, especially with technology, how it takes jobs away, that we have an adequate workforce. Number five really goes back to what happened on Sixth and Cedar. That was pretty much a by right, so I'd like to make sure that all our, literally, updated policies, councils, procedures, to deal with the ever-changing Sacramento issues, so we don't have another Sixth and Cedar project that was a by right project, you should've stopped at the, at the planning board stage, should've never come to the council, because our hands were still tied. And I think it really frustrated the community, 'cause they felt that the council could've stopped it. So, going back, and number seven, it's related to number one, but I really think, I, I know the mayor spoke about it, the last time we talked about how to be more efficient to support our seniors for their mobility, is really looking at the possibility of using Uber or Lyft for senior transportation versus an empty 22-passenger bus that only carries three to five seniors, and they take them to CVS or the Ralphs, but I just think that we could be more efficient on how to move our residents around that need the transportation. I'd like to see if we can do two community events in Magnolia Park. That seems to be a really big hub of community activity when something is, is put on. I, I use Holiday in the Park as an example. And number nine is, I'd like to see some type of, some type of policy. Whatever the council's goals are, I believe that our boards and commissions should know what our goals are, so, 'cause some commissions kinda have a free-for-all, and they're never really in line with what the council's goals are for the next period, that, you know, as they're moving forward and their work productivity, that they're aligned with council goals. And number 10 is kind of a wish. Soccer fields, and maybe another set of pickleball, as that's really picking up. If you just watch, it's kind of a new thing that's really picked up. And those are my 10 goals for the next 12 months.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Calamantes.
Yes, so my goals for the next 10 years. You gotta think big, right? Leadership's part of providing the vision, not short-term, but also long-term. Bottom line, I think we've all talked about it, provide more housing, whether a market or affordable, we need it, I mean, like it's been discussed before, we're job-rich and housing-poor, so we've gotta step up and do our share. But I don't see eliminating parking as a solution. You know, there's been some people that have brought up that people are doing away with their cars. I don't agree with that, because the, the conferences, the different sessions that I've attended, they just say the opposite. It may be wishful thinking about people doing away with their cars, but it's not happening. Recruit more bodies to fill our needs throughout all departments, obviously, especially the police and fire, and CDD. Very important positions that have to be filled to maintain the quality of life for Burbank residents and people that are trying to move in here, developers that are trying to work in here, so they know what the lay of the land is, what do you, what do you require? Because things keep changing, and we've heard it from developers, you know, I've spoken to Planner A, he told me one thing, I spoke to Planner B, and he told me another thing. So anyways, consistency, more consistent. Look at the economic trends going forward, especially due to the virus. You know, the world is changing. You know, I just, I started thinking about it this morning in regards to, I just heard that Disneyland is closing. You know, all the, all the pro teams are canceling their, their seasons, so the world is definitely changing going forward. 10% loss in the market today? The worst since 1980s? You know, so, things moving forward are gonna be different because of the things that are happening right now. So we have to keep an eye on that. There's not much we can do possibly, but as long as we're focused and be able to respond at, at the time that it's needed. Be active at the state level with mandates coming from Sacramento. We have to stay proactive, we can't just be reactive. Burbank, for many, many years, has only been reactive. We only respond to a problem, we only, instead of getting, and what electors tell me, come to me before it's already done. Before the cake is finished, right? Come to me while we're still working on the cake, the ingredients, and then we can come with some sort of solution that might be helpful to your local city, or the region as, as a unit. But come to me early, don't wait till it's already done. Keep community informed about the I-5 changes. Obviously, you know, we started this about 10 years ago, as you've heard me say that several times. I've kept telling the community, be patient, be patient, be patient, and here we are with carbagead number two coming soon, so let's, let's keep the community informed. Make sure the businesses are also on board with this in regards to what's happening. I know we've stressed the fact that we only want to, our, impact our, our businesses during one holiday season, which hopefully that's gonna be it. So, just keep everybody abreast of what's happening. I think that makes it a lot easier for people to take change, when they know what's coming, or they can be part of the solution. Look for a solution to our dog park search. We've been discussing that for many, many years, ever since I was on the Parks Boards, we talked about it, I brought it up. There is no perfect place. There is no perfect places, and they've, Parks Department has made attempts at looking at various locations, we've gathered, you know, community members that are interested in dog parks, and there is no perfect place.
The color is not significant. The golden ticket.
Yellow's the go. I don't know if that means caution. I, I wanna piggyback on Councilmember Murphy's comment- I want to piggyback on Councilmember Murphy's comment in regards to the traffic control, we have to find some solutions, if not the perfect solution, let's do, let's use best practices from other cities, let's reach out, you know, we don't have all the answers other city might have already had, have implemented some programs or solutions that we can implement here, at least try it, because, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. I'd like to have the research new homebuyer program, especially for teachers and EMS personnel, that's been used, you know, in other areas. I know there's a lot of pros and cons to it, but at least let's try and go down that road and see what, if we can do it here in Burbank. I know it's expensive to live here in Burbank. Greater involvement with Metro and SCAG, looking for monies that are available, once again, here's another area that we have been just not very active as electives, recently we have been very more active, involved in SCAG. Metro's got a lot of monies available, as we're finding out from our supervisor, she's been very generous to Burbank in being able to find monies that are available, so we just have to keep, keep talking to our supervisor and the people at Metro and SCAG. Last but not least, I'd like to look at the possibility, if my colleagues are down the road when we discuss it, establish a Caesar Chavez Day celebration. I just got an email from Glendale, the city of Glendale, they're celebrating their 19th annual Caesar Chavez Day celebration on the 28th of March. And here we are, a city of Burbank that has 25% Hispanic population, I know we do proclamation, but I'd like to even step further than that and have a Caesar Chavez Day celebration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So what I'd like to propose at this point is that we take a 10-minute break, and during that time, I'm going to look at the grouping and move things around a little bit probably, and then when you come back, we'll look at it together and say, do we think these things fit together, or do some things actually need to be in a different category, and is there, is there anything that should be added or removed, something we put up there, it's a goal, but City Council, there are a few things you mentioned along the way, you weren't sure if you were the right group, so should that stay up there? So I'll do a little rearranging, you take a break, when we come back, we'll take a look at it, and then we'll do some voting, yes, Mayor Springer? Initially, yes, not another 10 goals, but yes, if there's, if looking at it as a whole, if we realize, wow, that's really important and no one brought it up, we should add it.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll reconvene at 3:40. We have one advocacy and relations, which is about relationship with the school district, relationship with the state, advocating more for city resources. Finance, fiscal soundness, taxes, economic trends and funding opportunities. Housing, a lot of the financing for BHC, more housing, housing policies, rent fairness, homebuyer program, new models and policies. We have a planning category where we've put the Golden State specific plan, the civic center plans, universal design, and are proposing to put in there some of these that are about developers, and, and looking at development through the planning lens of how everything fits together. A homelessness category with prevention, solutions, and shelter. Quality of life, these would be some new or expanded amenities for the city, dog parks, celebrations, events, soccer fields, and took a stab at equality for women being part of that one. City services is more about maintaining what we have now in terms of, in terms of our workforce, police officers, ambulances, quality city staff. Sustainability, we have our carbon-free initiatives, sustainability coordination. Civic engagement, here about participation in council meetings, participation with the goals and the boards and voter turnout. And then finally, traffic and transportation has the bridge, the I-5, thinking about public transportation for seniors, buses in general, and traffic control. So any reflections, feedback on what we have done here?
There's no trolley up there.
I didn't, I didn't write down every word you said, but we will harvest your worksheets so that if there's more detail on them, we can get that included.
Thank you.
And there's no Olive and Magnolia Bridge, but you'll have my sheets, right?
Okay. I'll add it to the bridge page.
Thank you.
But generally, those categories, fair enough, I mean, none of this is going to be perfect, but just as themes, does that make some sense to you? Okay. Any other major things anyone wants to add at this point? Okay, so, then you get to vote. So each of you will get a set of five emoji stickers that you can put on the category that is most of interest to you, not on a specific goal, so we're going to do these broader theme goals that we, you know, we'll just say, for instance, planning right now, but we'll have the detail understand what it means. So you can put these on those orange pieces at the top, on the five that you would consider your top priorities for the next year as categories, so you can get it up and do that at your convenience.
Thank you. Ooh, I got sunglasses. My sunglasses made me too happy.
Okay, also, if there's something you feel very, very strongly about- Okay, also, if there's something you feel very, very strongly about, you can use more than one of your stickers on the same category. If you want to cluster them, that's okay. All right, so we have housing, quality of life, and traffic and transportation have four votes. Then, city services, planning, and sustainability have three votes. All right, so then we have one vote on civic engagement, one on homelessness, none on finance, and two on advocacy and relations. So at this point, we could, we could stick with those six that got the most votes there, or we can do another round, if you would like to do another round on any of the top categories. Six seems like it would be a number of goals that would be achievable. If you like those six, anyone want to make any comments or propose changes here? Mayor Springer?
How about if we combine housing and planning as a single category? Or housing and transportation as a single category? And I argue that because at least we have consistently discussed housing and transportation as related efforts. We've had a policy where we want to locate housing near transit and transportation. That would collapse six into five, however we combine them. That's just one option I put out there, and I suppose another option is we vote again.
So are we trying to downsize?
No, we can, six is fine, if you want to stick with the six, just to see if we're happy with those six.
Well, you know, I always feel that realistic goals with stretch. Okay, gimme goals I'm not in favor of. I mean, we can accomplish this in three weeks, this one can be done in two weeks, and we're done for the year. So I'd like to put some stretch into it. So by leaving it at six, I don't know if we consolidate, does that affect anything? I think the city manager would like to weigh in.
I think you guys have done a great job. That six is fine, we could definitely work with that. I'd rather keep them almost separated, just so when I come back and provide you with more specifics as far as the work plan, they'll be broken out real nice. So there's no magic number here, as far as, we were trying to go for five, six is perfect. We could work with this for sure.
And the categories that didn't get enough votes, we'll do those anyway, right? I mean, we have sound fiscal policy.
Those are certainly subjects that come off regularly, yes, in your work.
Right.
We will concentrate on council goals, that's what comes first.
Right, right, I know, but as for doing our business, I mean, we have our, we've worked years on our policies, like for...
Sure, I mean, we're not going to just forget about finance and, you know. Yeah, exactly. So as you can see from our sheet, as far as council accomplishments, you know, we had the five goals, but there was a big list of other stuff that comes up during the year. So, but when it comes down to what do we prioritize? Do we work on housing, or do we work on this other thing? We'll use, you know, we end up using the goals to help guide us, and we're working that program. So it's, you know, it's a develop plan, work the plan kind of thing. So that's what we'll be concentrating on as far as this next 12 months, is those six and working through the different work plans for each of those.
All right, I guess the point I was trying to make is that some of the other categories are just a part of conducting city business. Like, find, you know, being fiscally responsible, right? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but six is plenty for an hour and five minutes, I mean, that's what we've got.
No, I think that's good.
I'd be happy to do this some more, but not today.
All right, does everyone feel satisfied with the six goals being housing, traffic and transportation, quality of life, city services, planning and sustainability? Feel good about that? Okay, great, good job. Okay. So then, yes, you have made it through the hardest part of the day here. So thank you so much for that, and also for providing your examples. And again, if you can leave your sheets with Ms. Alice at the end of the meeting, and so that we'll have all your more detailed thoughts that were behind these post-it notes here. And so the staff will take this, we'll start looking at this in the context of the year and planning out the work that we have coming up. And of course, as we get into that work, then that's when we want to, we do want to think again about the, how council is working together to achieve these goals, as well as how you're working with staff. So I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Garcia to look at those documents, and then after that, we'll ask you to adopt the goals and the documents before the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, down the homestretch here. So to wrap up the program today, we'd like to take a look at the two docs that Ms. Goldman was mentioning to you. You guys have previously approved these, and the first being council's How We Work Together document, and the second being council's Expectations of Staff document. And traditionally, we'd like to, these are reviewed, periodically reviewed, so that we can reaffirm the collective commitment between council and staff, so we can work toward, as we've got here today, a new set of council goals that we can, again, focus on and drive toward completion. So the documents have been edited slightly, just a quick note here. Just for the, they're easy to read, so no content has been changed at all, they've just been edited and rearranged from a formatted standpoint. So at this time, we'll go through the first document, which is city council's How We Work Together document. And what I'll do is I'll just go through each section, and then we'll just see if there's any changes or amendments that would like to be made, and then we'll progress to the next one. So we'll start with the first, first city council's How We Work Together document, and we'll start with the first session, which is Working Together. Are there any changes or proposed additions to that section?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to just propose a small change to number one there, working, under working together. I would propose that we remove "you represent", just to leave it where it says, "Consider issues and how they affect the community as a whole." It's about the community, not you personally.
Okay, you can make the amendments.
Thank you.
Any others? That section's? Okay, we'll move on to the second, Communication and Transparency. Any additions or amendments there? Okay, next one, professionalism. Additions or amendments there?
I'd just like to comment real quick, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Where it says, "Be hard on the issue, not the person who raised it." It's so true, you know, as far as I've seen in the past where it becomes hard on the person as opposed to the issue itself. Don't kill the messenger, right?
Sure, and those tough conversations are real good. Those are the things that allow us to stretch and, you know, evolve and find those creative and innovative ways. But yeah, the messenger's not the issue there, it's that topic and how we can work through that, definitely. Any other changes or amendments for the first document here? Okay, we'll progress to the second there, which is council's Expectations of Staff. And I'll do the same format, we've got a few more, but we'll go through those individually. So we'll start with the first one, Effective Communications. Any changes or amendments there? Okay, we can jump to number two, Objective Analysis.
Madam Mayor, I agree 100% about different alternatives or options should be presented. You know, gimme a choice of two or three directions that we can go on or move forward on, as opposed to just one.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, if we have a situation where there's only one alternative, then so be it, but if potentially can be two or three, I'd like to see two or three.
Okay, outstanding. Next item there, number three, Recommendation. Okay, move on to the next step, number four, Faithful Compliance. Move on to number five, No Surprises. Move to number six, Play No Favorites. Number seven, Availability. Number eight, Direction. Number nine, Differences. Next item is Ethics. The last section, What Staff May Expect From Council. Everybody's comfortable? Okay, we'll move on. That's outstanding, thank you for your input. These documents are definitely helpful for staff when we're preparing agendas and reports for council's consideration. So we're down to the last step here, and of today's session, I'll hand it back to Mayor Springer for two proposed motions. The first will be to adopt the goals set today, and the second will be to reaffirm the Expectations document as amended. Thank you again for all your work leading up to today, and all of your attention and thoughtfulness today. Taking this time demonstrates to the community that the work you are willing to put into maintaining and improving Burbank. I'd like to thank Mrs. Goldman and Mrs. Alice, as well as Mr. Hess for giving us this opportunity for working through the program today. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. So is there a motion? Yes.
Madam Mayor, yes. I'd like to recommend that we adopt the city council goals.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, can you please take the vote?
Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Yes.
Mayor Springer.
Yes.
And moving forward, I'd also like to recommend that we adopt city council documents, How We Work Together, and Expectations of Staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy. Councilmember Gableletti.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Yes.
Mayor Springer.
Yes.
Okay.
One question. One question for the city manager. Will our members of our boards and commissions receive this document? Because there's one point here that talks about boards and commissions, just to make sure that they know what the council's expectations are of themselves, extended to boards and commission members?
Yeah, we'll figure out a way to distribute that.
Thank you.
Great, great question, thank you. Okay, we now adjourn to Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor, for a regular meeting. Thank you.